Okay, we're going to call this meeting of the Maricopa County Board of Supervisors to order here. We actually have two meetings today which deal with the adoption of final budgets for the county and the county special districts. At this meeting, we will convene the public hearings, which includes the truth in taxation hearings, and then also, we're going to have some presentations on the budgets. At the conclusion of this meeting, then, we will convene a second meeting where we will handle the adoption of the budgets. So Cindy, I'd like you to come up and join us for a presentation along with Myra. Thank you to both of you for your incredible work on this. Again, this being my first time as chair, I had for the first, you know, first time for me to have a up-close and personal view of just the amount of work that you both put into this, so thank you so much for everything. And with that, I'll turn over to you, Cindy.
Myra's still here, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, exactly, that's right.
She's sticking it out.
Which we're-
Three months forward?
Five.
Five, alright.
Yes, which we're very pleased to see. So with that, Cindy?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, board members. So the first thing that we want to do this morning is go over some of the changes that we've made between the tentative budget adoption and the final budget adoption that you have before you today. So those changes total $26,269,599, and we have them broken up into several different categories. The first category of $6.7 million are where we're using or moving operating contingencies to the various departments based upon specific needs. The second category of $13.1 million would be changes in our non-recurring contingencies, going to departments to address their issues. Then $627,000 worth of changes in special revenue funds. Then we have reallocation in between funds. There are several lines that will go through that sum to those amounts of money that you see on the screen, the $97,000, and then the shifts and the net change of $108,000 down on the budget. But then that was offset by changes between departments which net out to an increase of $107, I'm sorry, $108,000. And then we have some switch for the oldest project, moving money out of the project reserve over to the project. So again, the changes sum to $26,269,599, and the net change to the budget will end up being zero. From the operating contingency perspective, the very first item you see, this happened at the state after the budget was adopted for the county, when the state adopted their budget, our all tax contribution increased. We had anticipated a $9 million increase and ended up being $15 million, so this additional $6 million will be taken out of contingency and moving into our payment for all tax. And that was primarily driven by an increase to the wages for the direct care workers in the long-term care program. The second item is where we had contingency set aside. We thought there was going to be a piece of legislation that would have impacted our sales tax for data center lease equipment. That did not go through, so we're able to relieve that contingency of the $2.2 million, and actually, that helped offset the $6 million increase to the all tax. The third item is the human services budget will increase by $1.2 million in the general fund. We have this money set aside in contingency for the power transit program. There's been movement on our agreement with Valley Metro, so this allocation will support that program for fiscal year, or initially support the program for fiscal year '20. The next two items are for OET. There are three positions for cybersecurity that were in contingency pending a report, and now those funds will be moved over to the Office of Enterprise Technology. And in addition, there is $171,000 going from our contingency for our ERP project going into the maintenance of our CGI program in the OET budget. The next item is for the sheriff's office. So when we did paper performance in fiscal year '19, the sheriff's office held back an amount of money, and they've since distributed that, so we're just putting this in their budget for fiscal year '21, so they have the annualized funding for those allocations that they made. The downtown Phoenix partnership indicated that they're going to raise the amount that they charge the county by $10,072, so we're taking those funds out of contingency, so they're available to pay that cost. And then the next three items are Superior Court, the county attorney, and the public advocate. So these are costs associated with Maryvale. So I believe the Maryvale Hospital did open their beds in April, so we are seeing an uptick in the number of cases. The court is not yet open there. We don't anticipate that till mid-fiscal year '20, but they are seeing an uptick in the amount of hearings that they're having, so the public advocate is adding the seven positions that they requested. At this point in time, the county attorney's office is adding two of the four and a half positions that they requested, and the Superior Court's adding three of the nine positions that they requested. So the sum there is $6.7 million. Again, in relation to Maryvale, we have the first three items, so this is really startup for those staff that we just talked about. And then for the court, it's also so they can begin to procure any in-court recording systems and any other equipment that they need to open that courtroom. The next item is a million, almost a million seven for public health, so this is to provide funds for a response to the hepatitis A outbreak. This will support staffing expenses to respond to that outbreak. And then the final item on this screen is moving the $10.8 million that we had set aside in contingency for the MCSO helicopter, moving that out of the contingency over to the sheriff's office budget. We did have a report that indicated that this purchase was warranted. The next two items are for special revenue funds. The first one is for public health, and they had anticipated a fee increase during fiscal year '20, and that won't be happening, so they'll need to use $190,000 of their special revenue fund balance to support costs in that area. And then the $437,000 for Petco grant, so that's for animal care and control. They got a $500,000 grant in fiscal year '19, wasn't all spent, so this is just carrying forward those funds into fiscal year '20. As far as reallocation of funds, the first three items have to do with the sheriff's office. The first one is one we do every year. We call these the splits. It's really the allocation of their overhead or indirect costs between all their funds. And this year, there's going, based on how the final budget laid out, we'll need to shift additional costs onto the detention fund that were in the general fund. That's $882,000. In addition to that, the sheriff's office requested that one IT position that was funded in detention be switched over to the general fund, and then their internal service costs for their risk management charges, there was a redistribution of those costs as well between the general and detention fund for $102,000. The next three items have to do with the Justice System Planning and Information Group that they disbanded, so the one position will be going to MCSO, so that is $135,000 going into their general fund. All those costs previously were funded in detention, and we're going to be shifting those to the general fund now. So there's the one position that went to MCSO. In addition, the ACM 950 will be retaining about $105,000 for special projects in that area, and then the balance, the $208,000 is going to replenish contingency. The next two items again are related. So prior to this fiscal year, there was MCSO support at Spur Cross that was given to the Parks Department, and then the Parks passed that cost on to this Cave Creek. So what's going to happen now is that will be, those costs will be part of the IGA that the sheriff's office has with Cave Creek, and then we will get new revenue in to support those costs in the sheriff's office as opposed to the revenue coming in the special revenue fund at the Parks Department. So all these changes netted out, we'll need to actually make an additional $206,000 worth of budget maintenance of that transfer to the detention fund. We are going to be shifting the remaining balance that we had set aside for our contingency for our ERP, so we're giving some to OET. We have that on the first slide. The balance, actually, we're going to shift over to the capital fund so we can begin the upgrade of our ERP system in fiscal year '20. The next is a shift between the Superior Court and the Justice Court. Currently, Superior Court was paying the mileage for the Justice Court fees, so they're going to apply that funding to Justice Court so they can pay the mileage for the people who are in jury duty. And then Spur Cross, so again, they are no longer having to pay for the sheriff's office, so they did, though, keep that expenditure authority in their special revenue fund, and they're going to be doing some planning for installation of restrooms at that park. This slide's a little busy. I'm going to try to walk through it column by column. So in the tentative budget, we had appropriated $6.3 million for fiscal year '20 for the oldest project. And then we had $2.7 million set aside in project reserve in fiscal year '20 for a total project, a project reserve budget of $9 million. We've been working with the Treasurers' Office, and our CIO has also been working with the Treasurers' Office to determine a health check process that we're going to go over on the next slide, but then in addition to try to understand what the resource needs are going to be during fiscal year '20 and then moving forward '21, '22, and '23. So based on those discussions, the proposed budget for the project for fiscal year '20 is going to end up being at the tentative, or at the final adoption, this $8.1 million. It'd be $5.5 million of their current appropriation, 2.5 million of the additional funding that we had set aside for the $8.1. In addition to that, however, we will still have $982,000 in project reserve in fiscal year '20 that then will be available for appropriation throughout the year, once we get through the health check process. So again, the same $9 million, just sort of carved up differently. And then as far as moving forward, again, the money that we have for fiscal year '21 through '23, again, is the same amount of money. Previously, it had been about $8.3 million for the current appropriation, the 7.8 in the reserve. That will now be $9.2 million in the current appropriation and almost $7 million in reserve. Going to the next slide then. Our CIO has been working with the Treasurers' Office, with the project manager there, to develop this health check process. So on this screen, it indicates what the process is going to consist of. It will be an independent review to assess the technical, functional, staffing, and funding status. It will monitor the project quality and progress. We'll have early indication if we have any problems or concerns. We would recommend the appropriate course of action, monitor critical success factors, provide guidance on risks and other project organizational dynamics, and then conduct a vendor performance review. And they will report to the board on a quarterly basis. So with that, again, the tentative, the tentative budget was $2,573,762,798, and the proposed final budget is the same. Answering questions?
Excellent. Thank you for that presentation. Thanks for all the work on it, and I want to make sure that I recognize my chief of staff, Laura Etter, and all the chiefs for their many, many hours on this and working with all the different offices. With that, questions from my colleagues, or comments?
Just a quick comment to Cindy and the staff of Hard Chargers. Thank you guys very much. There has been a transition over the, over the years with budgets, so thank you for that. And thank you, Laura. Bill, fantastic job. Did you see how much work goes into studying a budget over the year?
I did, yes. Thank you. You guys have done it before me. I now have a much better appreciation.
You've done a great job with it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would only add that congrats to the two of you as well, and to you, Mr. Chairman, and your team. You have to go through it to understand it, and there was no question about your talent or acumen in being able to do so, but we're growing. We're a fast-growing county, and to really have a true appreciation of just how hard it is to manage all the departments and everything else can be a bit tricky. So I think this is terrific. It's always nice to have the tentative matchup with the final. Kudos to you because you have a way of doing that. But very, very hearty congratulations to you for your work on this, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Other comments?
Mr. Chairman, I kind of want to just echo what Chief Urea Hickman has already stated. Just great job to your entire team. I know this is a heavy load, and also you, Mr. Chairman, for the work you put into this proposed budget. You know, a couple of things just want to point out, just the investment, just something that, a couple of things that are really near and dear to my heart, of course, the investment in the Maryvale Hospital. I know it's, it's getting there, it's going there, and the need out there, especially on the West Valley, is so critical, so that's nice to see how that's starting to progress and move forward. And then just the investment in our employees, I think that is just so critical. It's one of the things we hear over and over by all our electors, is how do we recruit? How do we retain our employees? Anytime we're able to sit back and say, okay, here's what we can do in terms of paper performance for those employees that are just, just working so hard and doing everything we're asking them to do, and even more so, and to be able to reward them with some type of increase is always good. So those couple of things are great, are great stuff. But overall, I think this is a fair budget. It is, it respects all the responsibilities that we have, and, you know, not everyone's happy. I get it. You're never going to make everyone happy, but I think it's a fair budget, and it's good to see this move forward. So thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Sellers?
Yeah, this being my first time through the budget, thank you so much for making such a complicated process so understandable for us. And I'll just echo the other comments from the other members. I'm very impressed with the way you handled everything, and for the fastest-growing county in the country, amazing job. Thank you.
I feel like I got to ask a question or something, like Cindy's in front of us. We should be asking her a question, but no, this is good stuff.
Now, well, so then I'll ask a question. Can you speak to how this budget positions America? Again, we, we're doing everything we can, and we know everyone in the community is doing everything they can to continue to have this strong economic growth, but how does this budget prepare us for a downturn? Are we prepared for it, and in what way?
Mr. Chairman, yes, I do believe that we're prepared for a downturn. We have contingency built in in case we do see a decline in our revenues, that we have a way to respond to that and not have to do drastic cuts immediately. We have planned for projects that move into the future, so we have money set aside to do replacement of vehicles, money set aside to do replacement of equipment, and even looking to do some replacement of capital, so we have all that built in, baked in for the future.
Excellent. Well, thank you for your focus on it.
To that point, I think that Cindy has been terrific at being able to master what, not that you have a crystal ball, but I think a fair question for all of us to look at is that we have 200-plus people moving here every day. It is going to test our resources, it really is, and our infrastructure and, and everything else. So as we continue to plan forward, if the numbers are correct, and Clark County is our second closest, and we're growing 70% faster than they are, at some point, we're going to have to deal with this. I think we are in this budget, but I think it's going to become more and more paramount for us to look at. Keeping the rate flat as we've done, I think, is really remarkable, but I'm hopeful if the interest rates are expected to come down in the fall, that this economic growth that we're seeing and the good economic times we're seeing are going to continue forward. But it might warrant a future meeting with Mr. McGuire or someone, just to ensure. I applaud the board. We have been very mindful over the past several years in making sure that we're, we're ready, and I think we have been, but we can't get all so too comfortable in the fact that we're just fine. It might be good to have that meeting in the air.
I think that's a great suggestion. Thank you. In addition to echoing the comments of all my colleagues, I want to thank you, Cindy Joy, as well, for the inclusion of elements in this budget that help Maricopa County to continue to be that smart government that it has been, and that's certainly one of my priorities as chairman, including becoming all-digital county by 2020, and the emphasis on, on, you know, becoming more efficient in our operations. The resources have been devoted to that, so I'm excited about that as we, as we move forward here. Any other comments or questions from my colleagues?
Mr. Chairman, Cindy, so we touched on it, and in the state legislature and the governor's budget, they found the opportunity to put a billion dollars in the rainy day fund. And we, we don't, I don't know if we call it the rainy day fund, but we do always leave a little bit back in case we just have a incredible slowdown quickly, so we can continue to run county government. What's, what's, what's our number right now?
So we have reserves in our capital fund to provide funding for future capital programs that are about equal to two months' worth of our general fund operating and detention fund operating costs, so there's about $200 million in the general fund side and about $60 million in the detention fund side.
Okay. Just, a lot of people don't, don't know that, that we find that extremely important, but we also find it very, well, to gird ourselves for a, for a massive shutdown in our economy that we can continue to keep, keep our wheels running, but hopefully, this next year, we will, we'll see the discontinuation of cost shifts from the state legislature to it. There is still things going on from 2008, so hopefully, now that all of this has been adjusted in, if the economy continues to gen forward, we'll be able to, to absolutely stop those from occurring. So we need to keep working on it.
We need to, Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Hickman, remember that when we first arrived here, our contingency funds were way out of whack, meaning we had way too much money that we were holding, and that should be taxpayers' money, and that for the past three years, I want to say it's three years, that we've righted the rudder with the same, I think, philosophy of the two months' worth, and has managed well, but-
And then, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to jump in here. This is interesting conversation. No, I think that that is a balancing act. It really is. You want, you want to prepare for the future and any possible unattended consequences that could come about. We don't know if it's the economy or whatever the case is, but we got to keep mindful of the need in our, in our community. Our county continues to grow by leaps and bounds, and that continues to grow by leaps and bounds, the needs of services and, and infrastructure and everything else that under, it's underneath our belt, we're responsible for. You know, I didn't have a different opinion on the state budget. You know, I agree, you put money into the rainy day fund, but at the same time, you have certain areas where it is raining. It's raining now, so you got to focus on that. But I think it is a balancing act. I think we're there, but I just want to keep mindful that the county continues to grow. One of the number-one calls we get is housing. Folks are being, I mean, they're looking for places to just live, and when folks are priced out of the housing market and can't even afford to, to rent, what happens? They go down the street, you know? So I, it's mindful, but nonetheless, I think we're there.
All, all great comments, and that this is a balancing act. I think the two months in reserve is very consistent with, you know, the private sector, what people would recommend for either for a company or people in their personal budgets, and it's a standard that, that this board set before I got here, and I'm happy to see that we're able to continue at that level. Anything further? Madam Clerk, do we have any slips on, speaker slips on this item?
I have none, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, all right. Well, with that, then, we will move on to item number two, which deals with the truth in taxation, proposed tax levy. And I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the proposed primary tax levy increase of $23,799,72, and direct the clerk of the board to send the appropriate documents to the Property Tax Oversight Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman, for that motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Gallardo. We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Supervisor Sellers?
Yes.
Supervisor Chukri?
Aye.
Supervisor Hickman?
Aye.
Supervisor Gallardo?
Aye.
Chairman Gates?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and now, we will adjourn as the Maricopa County Board of Supervisors and convene as the directors of the various county improvement districts. All of the districts and their respective budgets are listed on the attachment. Madam Clerk, do we have any speaker slips on this item?
I have none, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Well, then, in light of that, I guess we will adjourn as the boards of director of the county improvement districts and convene as the directors of the flood control district of Maricopa County to consider the public hearing and the truth in taxation hearing regarding the flood control district budget. Can you please proceed with the presentation?
So our proposed final budget for the flood control district is the same as the tentative budget, which is $123,171,290.
Okay, excellent. That was short and sweet. Madam Clerk, do we have any speaker slips on this item?
I have none, Mr. Chairman.
All right, well, then I would entertain a motion on this item.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the proposed primary tax levy increase of $3,383,616, and direct the clerk of the board to send the appropriate documents to the Property Tax Oversight Commission.
Thank you. And just to be clear, this is on item F2?
On item F2.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Chukri. We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Aye.
Supervisor Sellers?
Supervisor Chukri.
Aye.
Supervisor Hickman?
Aye.
Supervisor Gallardo?
Aye.
Chairman Gates?
Aye. That motion passes unanimously. Now, we will adjourn as the flood control district, and we'll convene as the directors of the library district, and we'll consider the public hearing and also the truth in taxation hearing regarding the library district budget. Do you have a presentation for us?
Me too. One really long slide. Our proposed final budget for the library district is $34,69,155, and it is the same with no changes from the tentative budget.
Great, wonderful, and I was happy to see an article in the paper today that was talking about this board's action as it relates to waiving the overdue fees for the library district, so hopefully encouraging a lot of people to get out and, and read some books this summer. Madam Clerk, do we have any speaker slips on this item?
None, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. And now we'll move to item L2, which is regarding the truth in taxation proposed tax levy for the library district. Would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the proposed primary tax levy increase of $926,690, and direct the clerk of the board to send the appropriate documents to the Property Tax Oversight Commission.
Thank you, Supervisor Hickman. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Sellers. Thank you, Supervisor Sellers. We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you. Mr. Sellers?
Aye.
Mr. Chukri?
Aye.
Mr. Hickman?
Aye.
Mr. Gallardo?
Aye.
Chairman Gates?
Aye.
That motion passes unanimously as well. And now we will adjourn as the library district, and we'll convene as the directors of the stadium district to consider the public hearing regarding the stadium district budget. Ms. Horgan, do we have a presentation on this item?
We do. The proposed final budget for the stadium district is $250,000, and it has no changes from the tentative budget.
Okay, excellent. Madam Clerk, do we have any speaker slips on this item?
I have none, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Then with that, this meeting is adjourned, and we will proceed to our special meeting. Thank you very much. All right, now we are in the special meeting regarding the adoption of the budgets, and we'll start with the Board of Supervisors. Do we have a motion on item one, which is the fiscal year 2020 budget for Maricopa County?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the fiscal year 2020 Maricopa County budget in the amount of $2,573,762,798 by total appropriation for each department, fund and appropriation unit group listed in the attached schedules. This amount represents no change from the tentative budget, and that we adopt the five-year capital improvement plan for fiscal years 2020 through 2024. In addition, we approve the attached executive summary.
Okay. Thank you for that motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Sellers. And before we go to a vote on this, I just want to state that I'll be voting aye on this motion, with the exception, I'll be abstaining from voting on the light item that deals with paper performance for the Superior Court. So with that, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
You don't need a roll call vote.
We don't need roll call vote, so that's why it's not there. All right. All right. We have a motion and a second. Unless there's any further discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. That motion passes unanimously. Now we'll recess this special meeting of the Board of Supervisors, and we'll convene a special meeting of the county improvement districts. Do we have a motion for the fiscal year 2020 budgets for the improvement districts?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the fiscal year 2020 budgets for the county improvement districts per the FY 2020 budget schedules entitled "Direct Assessment Special Districts" and "Street Lighting Improvement Districts."
Thank you, Supervisor Hickman. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Chukri. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Now we will adjourn as the special meeting for the improvement districts, and we'll convene a special meeting for the flood control districts. Do we have a motion for the FY 2020 budget for the flood control district?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the fiscal year 2020 budget for the flood control district in the amount of $123,171,290 by total appropriation for each fund and appropriation unit group. This amount represents no change from the tentative budget.
And as we're moving into the monsoon season here, we understand how important the work is that the flood control district does, and have great confidence that it will hold up here over some, hopefully, some nice steady rains that we're going to get over the next couple of months. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I will second it and also just echo what your comments, the number of projects that are still kind of in the Beltway, they're waiting to be tenanted to. It's real important. I think even talking to our colleagues there at City of Phoenix and the work, it's not even just Phoenix, it's county-wide, but the number of projects that are just in line to be dealt with, I think we have to also keep mindful as we move forward, and hopefully the monsoons treat us well. But there are a number of projects that still need to be dealt with.
Thank you for those comments. So we have a motion? A second? That was a second?
Oh, yeah.
I was just so blown away by those comments. There was a second there. All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Now we'll adjourn the special meeting of the flood control district and convene a special meeting of the library district. Do we have a motion for the fiscal year 2020 budget for the library district?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the fiscal year 2020 budget for the library district in the amount of $34,69,155 by total appropriation for each fund and appropriation unit group for the library district. This amount represents no change from the tentative budget.
All right. Thank you for that motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Sellers. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? That motion passes unanimously. And now we'll adjourn the special meeting of the library district and convene the special meeting of the stadium district. Do we have a motion for the fiscal year 2020 budget for the stadium district?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the fiscal year 2020 budget for the stadium district in the amount of $250,000 by total appropriation for each fund and appropriation unit group for the stadium district. This amount represents no change from the tentative budget.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Hickman. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Chukri. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Now we'll adjourn the special meeting of the stadium district, and we'll reconvene the special meeting for the Board of Supervisors, and I would entertain a motion for the board to convene an executive session.
Motion to convene an executive session, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Hickman. Thank you for the second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Motion passes unanimously. Now we'll move into the Sullivan Conference Room for the executive session. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.
Good job, everyone.
Good job.